This conference will now be recorded.
Flag of the United States of America. To the republic, which is the US, my nation, equal opportunity and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Okay. There's a static line. Is somebody?
It looks like it's Carol. Carol, can you mute?
Carol, can you mute the phone?
Yes, I did.
Uh, I don't think you did. Well, no.
There we go. Bill, can I go over the rules?
Okay.
All right. So we've already been through the agenda review. We have now started the public meeting. If you're accessing the meeting electronically and you desire to make a comment, please type your full name and address in the chat box, which is in the upper right. It looks like a speech bubble. During the courtesy of the floor, your name will be read and you will have three minutes to make your comments. Time will be allotted for comments from those who are accessing the meeting by phone only. This will again be limited to three minutes. The speaker must identify their name and address prior to making a comment. Most importantly, please mute your microphone to avoid background noise that may cause interference in the meeting and make it difficult for others to hear. Thank you.
Okay, and we will start with the roll call, but before we do, I just want to let folks know that one person who will not be present on this roll call is David Dunbar, who has been on the planning commission since August 9, 2000, so over 20 years. David submitted his retirement notice and he's no longer going to be working with us. So therefore, there is a position on the planning commission open. You can apply online. You can get the form online, or if you can't find stuff, call Tracy with the main phone number for the township. All right, so Greg went over the rules. We'll start. The agenda will have a comprehensive plan update summary. The subdivision review just has Mosaic Campus that we were just talking about. The proposed flex building in 1215 Hausmann Road has been postponed, as has the Premier Center Luxury Apartments. So if you're here just for those two, we're not going to be talking about them tonight. They will be on the agenda next month, the next month's meeting. We'll also be talking about transportation infrastructure, the comprehensive plan update, and then it will be courtesy of the floor. So the first thing to do is a review of the minutes, and these are the minutes of the October 15, 2020 meeting. Does anyone have any comments on those minutes?
Are we supposed to do a roll call first?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I skipped. Go ahead. Thank you.
All right, roll call. Brian Height.
Hi, here, present.
Diane Kelly.
Here.
Bill McNair.
Yes.
At Mulqueen.
Here.
Alan Tope.
Here.
David Wilson.
Here.
Six out of seven members are present. We have a quorum.
Okay. Thank you, Brian, for reminding me of that. So back to the minutes. Does anyone have any comments on the minutes from October 24, or I'm sorry, October 15? Hearing none? A motion to approve?
No. Second.
Let's say Diane for the motion, Alan for the second roll call vote.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Matt Mulqueen.
Abstain. I wasn't on the board for the meeting.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes five to zero with one abstention.
Okay, thank you. So going to the subdivision review. The first and only one we have tonight is the Mosaic Campus, major plan 2020-110. Request for a sketch plan review. As usual, this will consist of a staff presentation, the applicant presentation, courtesy of the floor, and a planning commission decision. So Greg, could you start with the staff presentation?
Absolutely. This is an application.
Sorry, Greg, can I interrupt for a second? Are we moving the comp plan update to the end?
Oh, I'm sorry. There is a comp plan, but let's do a comprehensive plan summary. Dave?
Yep. What we'll discuss is we're winding down the Phase Three, which was the how should we grow? And starting into the Phase Four, which is where we break into the working groups and the subject areas. So we'll be discussing later this evening the survey and respondents and when we're going to shut it down. And then also try and pick a date for the kickoff meeting. And I can kind of run through how that will be laid out. During this next phase, Phase Four is really where volunteers have the opportunity to kind of roll up their sleeves and get to work and start putting some recommendations onto paper as a working group. And then those recommendations will get funneled to the final plan. So it's really the big push. We got all the public input and commentary upfront. And then now's the time when we put that public engagement to use. So it's kind of the exciting and the active portion of the comp plan. So that concludes my summary.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. And now, moving back to Mosaic Campus, Greg, could you give the staff presentation?
Absolutely. Take two. An application to further develop the properties located at 3072 Cedar Crest Boulevard, 2967 Cedar Crest Boulevard, 2957 Cedar Crest Boulevard, and 2947 Cedar Crest Boulevard. The plan proposes to construct two 2,400 square foot commercial buildings, nine greenhouses, and an A2 space parking lot on the four parcels. Subject property is zoned NC neighborhood commercial. Joseph and Nahad Musa are the owners. Joseph Musa is the applicant. The community development department recommends that the applicant utilize the comments of the reviewing agencies and those of the planning commission to assist in the preparation of the preliminary plans. And there are no deadline dates for sketch plans.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. Okay, and it's now for the applicant. Your turn.
Good evening, everybody. This is Joe Renko. I'm a professional engineer from Black Forest Engineering, and I'm here with the applicant, Mr. Joe Musa. And we are thankful that you guys gave us the time to consider this plan tonight. We know there's a lot to talk about, so I'm just going to give a very quick overview of what I did here. And then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Musa to give you kind of a little bit of a detailed description of the business and kind of what he perceives for this property. So as you mentioned, there's actually four properties out there, now four parcels now. They're all owned under the common ownership of Mr. Musa. There's an existing farmhouse, we have labeled as a carriage house, single-family house, and a garage on the facility, which he's currently using for, I guess, for agriculture-type purposes and as well as the single-family dwelling for like a living space. So we've got this plan before you that's, again, it's a sketch plan, so we know it's going to evolve and it's going to need some work, but this is a full build. This is a concept, a concept plan of what he envisions to build this out over several years. It really starts with, there's, I think, a block of eight greenhouses that are shown, proposed in the center there, but it's my understanding that Mr. Musa is currently already working on having those greenhouses put up or soon to be put up. He has a building permit for those. And the issue there is he'd like to open those up for some retail sales, and we can't do that without parking. So that's kind of where the parking starts. And then in the future, there's going to be some other amenities on the site, which again, Mr. Musa can explain to you in much better detail than I can. But again, we're showing, we want to give the township a vision of like the full build out of the site so we could kind of talk about some of the potential zoning issues, pitfalls, things that we need to look out for. And I guess that's kind of really why we're with you tonight. So I'll turn this over to Mr. Musa, and then once it gets back to the planning commission, any technical questions or anything, I'm more than happy to kind of jump back in and answer.
Thanks, Joe. Good evening, everyone, and I'd like to say thank you for being on the call this evening to discuss this project with us. My name is Joe Musa. I am the current owner of the property. I am looking to run down the project with everyone. I currently own these four parcels with my mother, and I operate an event planning and fresh-cut floral design company. And we're looking to expand the business on the Cedar Crest site here. The intent, purpose, and vision of my project is to create a nature-inspired environment where the local community can come to enjoy, to escape into the garden and the garden center, purchase plants and home goods to beautify their spaces, meet a friend for lunch or ice cream, or join their families for dinner in the Garden Bistro, which will hopefully be farm-to-table, all in the same beautiful location where we're discussing this evening. I thoroughly love this space where it's located because of the rural setting that it has, but it's close proximity to so many other attractions in the area. I don't, I think that's all I have right now. Yeah.
I think that's a really good introduction.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that it?
I think that's it for, yeah, for our introduction, that's it.
Okay. Questions from the planning commission?
I have a few questions. Just with the overall permitting, and maybe this is more of a question for our staff. Is LD approval needed before obtaining building permits? Or? Because I guess it was mentioned that building permits were already obtained for the greenhouse.
I can answer that one. It's Laura. Currently, right now, all four lots are in the neighborhood commercial. However, with the existing lots that have the existing homes on them, they're residential uses in that neighborhood commercial. The two in the middle were always farmed, therefore, they have a non-conforming, illegal, non-conforming use of agriculture because they've always been farmed. So under the agriculture, he can have two permits were issued for two greenhouses.
Oh, okay.
Not the nine that are shown there. Two permits were issued for greenhouses to be put on the agricultural properties right now as they stand for, because they're agriculture, like I said. But once this all goes through, you know, it's going to change because, like I said, the main agricultural use that they were requesting with the nurseries and the proposal does require a special exception before the zoning hearing board. But because you're having other uses on here, that's where at the same time, they were going to be requesting variances for more than one principal use for lots, so.
Okay. I guess two of my first questions are in regards to water and sewer. It's my understanding there isn't public water and sewer available on the street frontage. And if you're doing all lot wells and all lot septic with setback requirements with the septic and wells, that may take up a lot of your usable land. You know, you're going to need a septic system plus a reserved space for a septic system. So I'm not sure if you're planning to extend public water and sewer or if, you know, private all lot water and sewer has been investigated and taken into account with how everything's being laid out.
Not yet, Dave, but basically, there is an erroneous note on the plan. It states that there public water and public sewer is proposed, but it is proposed to be actually all lot water and all lot sewer. So we haven't investigated that. The priority right now is working through some of these zoning issues with the township tonight.
Okay, all right, because that may change the layout of the site and whatnot. I guess another item is the zoning, and maybe you could speak to it. Are the lots not large enough to meet zoning requirements? Because a lot of the zoning will ultimately dictate the land development. So is that something that maybe you may need to work out with the zoning officer and zoning hearing board before moving forward with land development?
Well, actually, right now, and again, Laura could correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, if looking at these four tracks individually, they're all all lot conforming. The minimum lot size for the neighborhood commercial district with the agricultural use is five acres, I believe. So with the proposal, with this land development proposal, we'd basically be proposing to do a consolidation, and we'd basically be making an existing, several existing non-conforming lots into, I guess, a better condition?
All right, because then I think you'll run into the multiple different uses on the same lot. So I think there's a lot of zoning that needs to be worked out first.
Yeah, so one of the comments in the letter, which we have on our list to discuss tonight, is the fact that there is more than one principal use for this lot proposed. And that's kind of where we're looking for some feedback from the planning commission and the zoning officer tonight.
So is there, out of the multiple uses, is there a, you know, primary use that the applicant envisions?
If I can answer, it's Laura again. It's my understanding that they wanted to go for the agricultural use with the nursery, the horticulture, the nursery, and that would be the special exception. The other ones, they would have to actually be a use variance request. So unless that's changed with adding the other, and they wanted to do, you know, a restaurant or something else, but it's my understanding that the primary use would be the agricultural, horticulture, and nursery, excluding the raising of farm animals.
I'm following on with Dave just mentioned. It appears that there are significant zoning variables to be addressed, and it's going to drive the plan. So I'd be, I'm inclined to hear what the zoning board would have to say if you go that route and decide to apply for variances and then see what the plan comes out to be after going through the zoning process.
Okay. One thing that will be in the plan that I don't think is shown is like where would the wells be and where would the septic system be if you're going to do this? And how much water do you expect to use on this site?
Well, we don't have the actual locations of the well and the septic designed or even really considered yet because obviously, this whole layout could be in flux based on, you know, some of the decisions from the zoning board and obviously, some of the feedback from the planning commission. That's why it is just a sketch plan right now. So we do anticipate obviously showing that once we get to that point. I don't know what the proposed water usage is. I would assume it's going to be minimal. There would be a well designed for that capacity.
Yeah. I would recommend, you know, possibly investigating where good locations on the property would be to provide wells and septic, and then that could help provide some direction with the site layout.
And I would add to that when we're talking about water for fire hydrants too, since our buildings on the property, there'll need to be a minimum amount of water to take care of the hydrant use.
Any other comments, questions?
I have a question about the, what's the purpose of just making a proposed stone driveway? And does that stone driveway also indicate a stone parking lot?
Well, if you're asking us, that was one of the other things that we'd like to talk about tonight is the fact that to try to keep this more of a rural setting, it just seems that it would be more appropriate to have a stone parking and a stone driveway. Understanding, though, that that's not something that the ordinance allows. So it really depends. We're hoping to get some feedback on how open to that the planning commission and township are.
I would recommend performing some coordination with Pendott because it is on Cedar Crest Boulevard, which is a state road. And Pendott will have jurisdiction and some say with your driveway entrance. So I would like to see what Pendott says about utilizing that existing residential driveway for the commercial use, and that may provide some direction with the driveway. I personally prefer pavement or parking lots. It does seem like a lot of parking, though, for the use.
Yeah, and stone driveways or any parking lots, which, one, it's not allowed in our ordinance, and two, it's a big lift for maintenance. It's a continuous maintenance issue. And if you're plowing this in the winter, I don't know if this is going to be shut down in the winter months or not, even though you have some holidays that attract people that would like to purchase flowers around Valentine's Day and whatnot. Plowing can be a big issue with stone driveways, even if it's hard, compact. And then you also have, if you get fire apparatus in there and they're making turning movements or even a delivery truck, that could rut the stone as well. So I agree with Mr. Wilson. I'm not a big fan of a stone. I prefer pavement, hard, either asphalt or concrete. So that's just, and with all that parking, there's a lot. You're going to, obviously, you're intending to have a lot of traffic, and so that causes, you know, a stone to deteriorate quicker than just maybe a residential, single-use driveway that's been grandfathered. So I think for a commercial use, and if this is your whole build-out plan, regardless of, you know, on-site wells or whatever, that may eliminate some buildings, I think it's a good policy to adhere to our ordinances and make it paved or concrete. Thanks.
Yeah, so I think those are good points, and honestly, personally, it's not my property. This is Joe Renko, by the way, again. It's not my property, so I really can't speak for the owner, but I like paved parking lots, too. I think from a maintenance perspective, I think they're better. For grading perspective, they're better. I guess the hardship on the owner here is the fact that we're using the zoning ordinance to basically determine how many parking spaces are needed on a project like this, where it is, it really is intended to be, or vision to be more of like a rural setting. I mean, it's like, it really looks like we're paving a quarter of this site right now with asphalt, which, again, I understand the requirements, but it seems counterintuitive for this type of, I guess, like this type of design and this type of use. So I guess, is there, you know, is there a possibility that we could work with the township, with the zoning officer, on maybe some kind of, you know, kind of out-of-the-box parking requirements for the, you know, the specific type of use this is? It's not, you know, this isn't a typical or traditional retail sale that the zoning ordinance is probably, was probably written for. I'd say at a minimum, it's unique, right?
Hi, Joe. It's Laura.
Hi, Laura.
And I'm seeing with the zoning, you know, if it's kind of black and white in the zoning book, if it's there and it can't be met, it all has to be discussed at the zoning hearing board. So majority of your items, I mean, we understand exactly what you're saying. It's where the pretty pictures come in, that you would want to show to the zoning hearing board and explain your situation, and then you need to find the hardship. You know, what is the hardship behind this variance that you're asking for? Those are going to be the main things that you'll need to present, you know, to the zoning hearing board. It's not something that, I mean, we would love to be able to work with you, but unfortunately, you know, we're not like the planning commission where we can look at, you know, your hardship and your waiver with anything with the zoning hearing board. Only they can determine that, and you have to have that hardship. So, you know, prior to going to them, figure out, you know, what it is and, you know, explain that as best you can to them.
Okay.
Because another curious thing is the proposed other, like, reserved parking lot or in the top right of the plan. If that is to meet the parking requirements, that should be shaded the same color as all the other requirements. But I agree, you know, Laura is our zoning officer, building codes official, so she knows, you know, that the guidance, a lot of this guidance is dictated on zoning first and then come to planning, and they can, you got to, you know, like Laura said, explain your hardship of why this doesn't make sense or why you can't do it. And you might run into that issue if you have to have reserve areas for septic and water. I'm just giving, you know, spitballing here, but those are all hardships that you might need to investigate of why I can't do this, then explain that to the zoning hearing board. So.
That's a good point. Good point. Thank you.
How many parking spaces do you show here? And what do you envision, you know, when are you going to get crowds? Is that going to be a normal business day?
I don't anticipate, this is Joe Musa again, I don't anticipate that it'll be a normal business day. My projection now is that this will be a busy day on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday. And specifically, the possibility of filling this parking lot will likely happen in early springtime when, you know, everyone's in planting season mode and getting their veggie gardens together and, you know, all of that type of at-home thing.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Do you all have any questions for us?
Well, yep, how about, how about just some, maybe some forethought on what the township's doing with, we're looking, would be looking for with respect to Orfield Road? And right-of-way dedication, improvements?
I believe Tony, our township engineer, has a little more familiarity with some of the possible. Um, changes that might occur and um some of the right of way that may be needed. I would um. I guess Tony, let you speak.
Yeah, um, you know, as listed in our letter, it's a uh. An intersection with uh improvements that are planned for, so um. Would definitely be looking for some way to make it better. Now, this is a, it's a complete state road. Um, you have Willow, Orfield and Cedar Crest are all state roads, so you're surrounded. Um, I think at the time. That you'd be going to Pendot for your driveways, I think that would be the time that maybe uh. Myself, maybe some staff from the township, we'll all get on a call, see um what's Pendot's vision. We have some vision. Um, it might take some right away dedication on the northern half, northern portion of your site, I'll say. Um, there also are requirements for frontage improvements along um all your, all your fronting roads, so. Orfield, Willow and Cedar Crest, I think the township. Uh, at the time can rule on that if waivers are um appropriate or if they would like to see. Improvements and right away dedication along all your fronting roads. So I think um. Those are definitely questions. I think the big, the big item would be to get into Pendot for. Determination of what type of driveway you need onto Cedar Crest and then if there, if. Pendot themselves has a vision for improvements at that intersection.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Uh, it seems like there's a lot of zoning issues that. Need to be addressed uh before you can even develop the the plan.
Yep, that's, I I think that's gonna be our next stop.
Okay. A- anything else from anybody on on the sketch plan?
Anybody from public?
Thanks.
Okay, uh, public comment?
I have Lee Salt, thirty-seven thirty-one Manchester Road would like to chime in. Lee?
He's muted, Lee.
Uh, yep.
Okay, there you go. Sorry. Um, I just, just a a quick thing about the asphalt. Um, while I was hearing the conversation. One of the things that I I've seen a- around here is they actually have colored asphalt, so if you don't wanna have. Asphalt that looks like black, you could have it colored like red or something like a stone. Type look and put a text draw on it, so it doesn't look as, as, you know, generic as a black asphalt. So just an idea for the the developer.
Thank you.
Welcome.
It, there are also some uh permeable uh asphalts that are available also. That may make sense here. Which might help you stormwater handling.
Yeah, the the ordinance specifies um some sort of hardscape. Which if you get into the more exotics, um, that would be up to the township engineer to determine if that meets the definition of hardscape.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, good, thanks.
Any, any comments? Do you have any more comments from the, from the floor? Doesn't look like it, huh?
I have nothing in the chat box. Perhaps you wanna open it up to the callers?
Okay. Any comments from the callers? Okay, uh, I guess that that's, that's it. Um. Do you have all of any questions or we'll, we'll uh just uh, we'll, there's no deadlines or anything here. Um, you just. Take the comments and uh. Work with it.
Yeah, I could guess what's, I mean, we, I guess our next step would maybe be to sit down or Laura maybe talk to you and get. Figure out a game plan to get before the zoning board.
Yeah, that's what we should do, Joe.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I think we're good then.
Okay, thank you. The um. Next thing on the uh agenda, we we did do everything here. Uh, planning commission decision, there's no decision needed for a sketch plan. We will move on to the transportation infrastructure update. Tony?
Thank you, sorry, I'm switching screens around, I apologize. Um, transportation, there is not much going on right now with Pendot. Um, I think that. If you don't mind, I didn't actually talk to Dave Manhart about this, but it might dovetail into some of the things that were said either just with the last plan and also with. The comp plan coming up, but um, as you may know, the last three. Projects we had had intersections with uh planned improvements all listed on the comp plan. So I think that. You know, in these times, I think you can see the uh the benefit and. What's necessary as you move forward with the comp plan. So think through which intersections in the township. Have the potential for growth, what those could look like and um what would be good solutions, because as you can see, um, now that. I don't know if sprawl's the best word, but now as these projects are getting into different locations, there's opportunities and definitely um. With the opportunity to grab right away from some of these intersections, it might benefit the township greatly. So I think that um. I would just suggest as we move forward with Dave Manhart and the comp plan, I think that. Thinking through intersections, things like that would also benefit, it benefit. So.
Okay. All right, then we will, any, anything else, Tony? All right. Okay, move on to the comprehensive plan update. David?
Um, yeah, so one of the thing, just to piggyback on what Tony was saying, the um. The topic of intersection improvements, roadway improvements, that's all. Going to be taking place in that work, transportation working group. Um, is kind of, is the vision. Um, and then recommendations for. You know, identified intersections for improvement, things like that would come out of that working group. Um, so that's kind of what I, an example of some like actionable. Rolling up your sleeves, identifying spots, um, that would be conducted in those working groups. So we have, just to further elaborate on the summary, we've engaged Michael Baker International. Uh, to help us run this kickoff meeting. The original vision for the meeting was we, you know, hold it in a school. Have like the main auditorium, have a introductory meeting and then break out into different subject areas and different classrooms. Twenty-minute presentation and then five minutes, you can go to another classroom. Um, and the idea being that people get to an idea of the flavor and what would be discussed i- in those working groups. And allow people the opportunity to pick a working group that they're really interested in. Um, and kind of focus on that, that working group. In the age of COVID, we can't do that. Um, so we kind of explored some. Digital online solutions, um, reached out to a couple companies and. Michael Baker actually uses its WebEx as the platform, um, and they've used it for some. Um, statewide transportation meetings where they have, and they do exactly that, where they have a. Main session, like a main meeting room, and then they have breakout sessions and you can bounce around to different rooms. So Michael Baker's gonna facilitate the meetings um and handle all of the tech, tech aspects. Um, I think we'll have a moderator in each room to kind of, you know, make sure people are muted and whatnot. Um, so that's kind of how the meeting is intended to flow. We had been looking at Tuesdays in February. You know, after our last internal staff meeting, we kind of. Drew a pencil around the twenty-sixth, I believe it is, that last Tuesday of February. Um, but I think that's gonna be contingent on the second meeting that you're gonna have in in February. We're pretty much ready to go. Um, we have to line up some subject matter experts for each of the rooms. Um, but we kind of wanted to get our dates, the date hammered down so we could check availability of potential. Candidates for these subject matter experts. Um, so kind of our next step i- is the date. So I guess we could, Greg, I don't know if you think we should just wait until after the next, that second meeting gets nailed. Hammered down or?
Yeah, and and we should know that in a couple of days. I I would think everyone can respond by Monday. Um, but certainly, Dave, I I I think you made a good point and you haven't pointed this out here. Of the, the virtual room after that, so it's not important that you be in the first meeting.
Yeah, so one of the things that Michael Baker has is, they call it a. Virtual meeting room and it it is like a virtual meeting room. You walk in, like it's three D animation kind of thing. And you walk in and you kind of look around and there's maps up on the board and you can go in and look at the map. There's a sign-in sheet, there's, you know, a quick survey and then you can watch presentations. So the idea is, as a follow-up to that meeting, we could have that virtual meeting room set up. Um, so that people that couldn't make it to the original meeting can. Inter- interact and engage with that meeting in that virtual platform. Um, and sign up, hopefully sign up for a working group. And, you know, we're still trying to work out the details of that virtual meeting room. Um. But even if it's not through the blog, everything will be recorded, um, so we'll be able to post. Videos of all the meetings um and have signup sheets after that as well. Um, so attendance at the meeting, you know, it it's great to be at the original meeting, but all the meetings will be recorded. Um, you know, and one of the things that came up at last night's meeting is engaging, you know, different people. And having those on-demand videos kind of help with the people, you know, the younger couples with young children. Taking the kids to all the practices and stuff like that. Um, you know, they could take the fifteen minutes. While they're waiting for their kids to practice or something, um, and watch the video. So. That's a big piece of of this next effort or of that kickoff meeting is, you know, to. Put that information out on the um, on the web so that people can hopefully get. Excited and interested in and actually wanna get involved and volunteer their time in these specific topic areas. And the other piece of the topic area thought is, you know, people are interested in specific top, specific topics. And are more likely to volunteer. With the topic they're interested in. So we're hoping to get a good turnout engagement-wise in these working groups.
Question I have, this um, meeting that's coming up, is it just for transportation or is it, I believe there were. Numerous subject matters, so it's gonna be all the subject matters and the people break out to the different. And it's not just transportation. Okay.
Yeah, so it, we structured it to match what's required of the comp plan. So there's a housing element, a transportation element, um, community facilities, resource protection. So there's a list of, I think it's six, five or six um, subject areas. And then each of those will have a subject matter expert in that breakout session. Um, to discuss, you know, the topics that you discuss when you're creating a work, um. A comprehensive plan in that topic area. Um, and then, you know, it'll be fifteen minutes and then a break and then you go to the next room. Um, and the idea also is, you know, we don't wanna, one of the thoughts is to keep it. Run that session three times, so people can choose that night, they can choose three to visit. But then if they wanna check on, in on the other three, they have the opportunity via the web and the recordings.
Can you give us an example of subject matter experts, like for example, for the transportation one, what type of people will be elected for that?
So like the transportation, we would get a, probably a transportation engineer or a transportation planner. Um, we have Scott Pistorzky with KCE doing our traffic model. Um, so he's at the top of the list um to handle that piece of it. Um, resource protection, you know, we've kicked around having a representative from Wildlands come in. Um, and kind of direct that discussion. Um, so, and again, the date is gonna. Drive a lot of it based on availability. Um, but we'll certainly. Do our best to get the best subject, the most expertise in those rooms.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I guess if there's no other questions on that, we'll, we'll wait for the date of the second meeting and then we'll probably throw out. Um, and Greg, we're thinking a Tuesday is probably the best bet.
Um, yeah, yeah, Tuesday, there are no township meetings planned on Tuesday, so that's a good day to do it.
Okay.
Okay, so that's your first choice is Tuesday, the twenty-third of February?
So, is it twenty-third?
Yeah, twenty-third.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, yes, sorry. I was looking at January.
All right. Okay, are there any, any other question? Do you have anything more, David?
I do.
Okay.
So the, the survey, um, the How Should We Grow visual preference survey has been out um since beginning of November. Um, it's winding down, we're just getting trickles in, um, so we'll get like two or three a week. Um, we're up to last, I checked yesterday and it was five eighty-six. Um, so we have a pretty good response rate. So one of the things we we discussed with the survey is to present the. Results of the How Should We Grow survey. And the phase two results of where should we grow and the phase one results, the guiding principles. And kind of package that all together after that kickoff meeting. So it becomes the meeting to kind of. Give the working groups something to think about when they go and break out into their working groups. So it's really the, I guess, the instructions to the working group meeting, but it'll have. That whole bundle of public input, um, all packaged together. And then hand it off to the working groups to run with. Um, the other piece of that is the transportation, traffic model. Um, will be incorporated into that and the economic fiscal impact model will be packaged into that. Follow-up meeting. So I guess.
When will that be available, those, those kind of things, the, the information? Cause it seems like there's a lot of information here. That that um might be difficult to absorb. I don't know, the, the meeting, you know, in a, in a, I don't know if a two-hour meeting or. Or a three-hour meeting, I'm not sure what, what you're thinking.
Yeah, I mean, we, we haven't really distilled it yet. Um, we haven't looked at the survey results yet. Um, we haven't, you know, once we get the survey results, then it gets handed over to the modeling. So I see, you know, at least a couple weeks after that kickoff meeting, we have this follow-up meeting with the scenario. And then, then it becomes the working groups. and then, then it becomes the working groups. Um, so I'm guessing a month, month and a half um, to get that piece together. That said, it's at some point, I'd like to close the survey so that we can get started on the analysis of it. Um, and start getting that information over to our other consultant, our modelers um, to start incorporating that into, into their fiscal and trans- traffic models.
Okay. Now, go ahead, Diane.
Ask how many um, postcards did you send out for that survey?
Seven thou- it was to every household or every person that gets a refuse bill.
So I remember that we were hoping for a thousand responses.
Yeah.
And I'm, this quick look on my, on the website, is there a way that we can just maybe put it up on the homepage for one last hurrah, just to remind?
Yeah, that was, you know, that's a great idea. I think putting it back up on the blog and say, you know, survey's closing in a week. Um, on the website and the blog is a great, great idea and it gives that, hopefully get a last push. Um, and we can certainly do that.
And I think that'd be a good opportunity to hopefully reengage people if they've forgotten because of, and kind of everything's kind of been.
Holidays and yeah, yep. Yep, because that went right out, yeah, right after the election, right before the holiday. So it was kind of not ideal to get people's attention. We, we had some competition.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yep. So.
End the survey in another week or two, Dave?
We can end it, maybe we just end it on the thirty first, the end of the month. Um, because I think we launched it on October thirtieth or thirty first, so that'll give us a nice monthly, you know, rounded off to the month. Um, so we'll get something together for the blog and for the website that says, you know, survey's closing on the thirty first.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Dave, if you like, I can put that up tonight.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Anything else, David?
Um, that's about it. Um, we are using Michael Baker to help with some of the project management. Um, now that George, George is gone, he's kind of left a bit of a void. Um, so, you know, we definitely need some more help um, getting it going. So we're engaging them um to kind of help manage the project from here on out, um, to help us get it across the finish line.
Okay, good.
Is that the local uh, Michael Baker office or the one in Harrisburg?
The local.
Okay.
The, the, one of the beauties about it that we found is they have the local office. Uh, but it's an international firm and they have access to international experts, international technologies, um, so that. What's that?
They have lots of toys they can play with.
You got lots of toys.
I've been through.
Really cool toys too.
With Pendy, I've been through a lot of their meetings and it really works well. It's surprising how, how it works.
Where is the local Michael Baker?
Uh, Bethlehem.
An office in Allentown. Yeah, right by the arena.
Their offices everywhere. Every continent, probably.
Yeah. But I, I think that's about all I have right now. Um, you know, we're, we're still moving forward. Um, bringing in some hired guns to help us, you know, get it across the finish line. Um, but this, this next phase is kind of the, you know, where we start really putting everything together. Um, so it's the fun part.
Good. All right. Thank you, Dave.
Um.
Uh, we will go, item seven now is courtesy of the floor. Uh, Greg?
I'm going to backtrack one. I was going to say, Dave, could we put together a list of the uh, the working groups? And I could get these out to the planning commission members so they can consider which groups they may want to, you know, look at.
Sure. Yeah, and you know, when we do the, once we get the date, we'll certainly advertise the heck out of it. And part of that will be the working groups for sure. Um, but I can certainly share the MPC working groups. Um, yeah, absolutely.
Great. Okay. Any other questions for Dave? All right, and then we'll go now to the courtesy of the floor. This is your chance. You want to talk?
Greg or Dave? Where are we at with our annual report that's due the end of March? Have we even thought about it yet?
George, George has it.
Oh, we've thought about it.
I think we could take a road trip and go get it.
That's a great idea. We'll all show up at George's. Funny, I like it. Um, yeah, we, we have, he kind of left, he did a, a lot of it before he left, um, kind of got laid the groundwork. Um, so yeah, Greg and I will be working on that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, this was, start with the courtesy of the floor. There are a couple of things in the chat room.
Yeah, I see Lee Salt is first.
Yeah, hi, good, good evening, everybody. I just had a quick question. I just saw on the South Whitehall web, one, start again. South Whitehall Township webpage that Hillview Road is going in front of the Board of Commissioners um, and their first meeting in the month. Can you, what happened overnight or something like that? I know Laura McConaughey was going to do something. Can you just give, if you have any updates on that, could you just uh, update me?
Sure.
Tonight, I think.
Um, basically, um, they decided on a date to go to the board. Uh, they have the recommendation from Planning Commission, which was to uh, deny the request. Um, but they requested to go to the board anyway, so we at staff have been uh, doing the advertising for the meeting. Uh, actually tomorrow I will go out and post the property and uh, send out the postcards. Um, so it's going to be a hearing on the first BOC meeting of February uh, to determine, well, what the board is willing to do with the application to rezone the property from R three to R five.
Okay, and Greg, you just said something uh, about postcards. There was, I believe there's supposed to be a meeting on, I, I believe I heard the twenty seventh about postcards.
That's also correct. Uh, we're having a workshop meeting at six P M uh, in the BOC meeting room on go to meeting. Um, and that will be, uh, the, the Board of Commissioners has requested uh, that staff talk to them and discuss possible means of improving our um, our notification, public notification. Uh, currently the MPC requires, I believe, only the adjoining property owners to be noticed. Um, for many decades, South Whitehall has gone above and beyond and had a three hundred foot radius uh, for notification around the property lines uh, for zoning hearing board and planning commission. And uh, policy has to in, has included certain BOC meetings on that as well. Um, just historically speaking, but obviously with some of the larger projects that have been going on in the past several years. Um, there's been interest in widening that scope. So um, staff and Board of Commissioners are going to sit down next Wednesday and discuss that and what we can and can't do about being better at notifying the public.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Yep.
I have a suggestion, Greg.
Suggest away.
Yeah. No offense to your signposting of the paper on the stick. But I, I know other municipalities around us have those corrugated plastic signs and it said, big red on one side, public notice. And then they have like a thing that you could slide in, but it's a reusable sign. And it really grabs your attention more than just your, your famous the posting of the property. I can get you more information. I think Whitehall Township does it, Lower McConaughey does it. They have certain setups that, it just brings it more attention than just the little eight and a half by eleven piece of paper on a stick, so. I should have took a picture of one, but.
By seventeen.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, I love myself.
Driving by at thirty five miles an hour, yeah.
Honestly, I've always wondered who actually stops, pulls over and walks over to look at the signs.
I did it the other day.
And you're allowed to tell the tale.
It was for the church road zoning thing, so.
Ah, yes. Yeah, church roads are a little easier to stop on.
But Brian, if they look pretty, they might take them.
Well, that's one of the, you know, if you want a public notice sign, how about it? Building into the permit.
Nobody wants a piece of paper on a stick. Unless it's a jalapeno.
Tell you what, there was a, there was a piece of paper on a stick across from my house for about eight months.
But now you make it pretty plastic, you're going to take it. That time probably would not have made it twelve hours.
Okay, okay, we have one, at least another courtesy of the floor.
Burke, yes.
Yeah, hi, Dave Burke, fourteen thirty six Buck Trail Road. Uh, on the comprehensive plan, uh, Dave, is it still intended to have Terry Poole uh, lead the effort on economic analysis in the comprehensive plan? And is that one of the six sections that will allow citizen involvement? Or how do you plan to handle that?
Can you say that last part again? Sorry.
You said there are six sections, traffic and so forth?
Yes.
Is economic analysis one of those sections?
So the economic model is going to be part of the scenario. Um, and the results of that scenario, again, this is, you know, looking at it through the crystal ball, um, so it may change. But the idea is that the public input um, gets run through that fiscal impact model. And then that fiscal impact results at that meeting can be discussed. And I think he said that he can tweak it based on different parameters live because it's in a spreadsheet um, or an app, I think he's developing. Um, but that information is what gets incorporated and brought down through those working groups, so it kind of informs those working groups. Um, so if that scenario is a negative impact, um, those working groups will be aware of that and they would likely make some recommendations to either mitigate those negative impacts or tweak the um, scenario.
Okay, so he, Mr. Poole is the person you're referring to, correct?
Yeah. Yes, Todd Poole.
He takes the output of the working group and tweaks it to see if makes it adjustments.
He, he takes the output of the scenario, so the where and how.
Okay.
And analyzes that. Once, once he gets the model figured out, we'll figure out if we can structure that meeting to have some um, different scenarios because I believe it's a um, relatively interactive model. Um, so at a public meeting, he can kind of move different parameters up and down to get a feel for what those impacts are. Um, and then it goes into, then all that information kind of goes through the working groups, comes back together. And then that, what comes back together gets synthesized into the new comprehensive plan. Uh, and if we need a full impact at that point as well, then we can certainly.
It's a iterative process, right, is what you're saying?
The, it can be, yes, yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, a- any comments for anybody on the phones? I don't think we have any more left, I guess. Any, any comments from anybody? Okay, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We, we are adjourned.
Bye, everybody.